I know you all have a very, very hectic day and a busy day like I do. But I'm gonna try to get around and say hi to all of you. It's so good to be here with you. Thank you so very much for hosting us. It's not unusual, as you know, that I'm around and at the White Rose Senior Center. But I appreciate you all and appreciate you having us today. I'm gonna ask Regina, yeah, don't go too far, the York Housing Authority's Executive Director, to come up and say a few words.
Good morning, good morning. I am not shorter than you are. But today is exciting. It's exciting to have the mayor and city staff here to be a part of our partnership. And this truly is a partnership with the Housing Authority, the Senior Center, and the city. All of us come together to make this happen. And this is what partnership does, is making people happy and making you comfortable in the area in which you live in, and so that you can enjoy your city and enjoy your town and enjoy each other. Because that's what community is about, understanding and getting to know who we live next to. And one thing I do know about the mayor, that's what her mission is about, letting people get to know each other, whether it's with the walks, the town halls. She cares, she wants to hear. So let us talk to her today and city staff. But I ask you not to always be the negative and the Debbie Downers. There are a lot of positive things going on here in the city. Let's also give some praises as it is due. And this time, I would like to welcome Mayor Kim Bracy.
Again, it's good to be here with all of you. We have a packed schedule with you, with us, and individuals with us as well, too. As you can see, we have our entire cabinet here and other staff members and people scattered throughout, too. So we are here for you to answer your questions at this quarterly town hall meeting. But before that jumps off, we were anticipating having a very dear older Yorke with us today. Unfortunately, she passed away. But we would like to ask the fire chief to come forward and a Deacon family, please, the family of Dorothy Deacon. While you all make your way, I'll start reading this. I know we're on a timed schedule as well, too. Dorothy Deacon, Distinguished Citizen of the Year Award. On August 12, 2017, at 4:55 p.m., the York City Fire Department was dispatched to an automatic fire alarm at the Delphia House, located at 350 East Philadelphia Street in York, Pennsylvania. Crews arrived and found the alarm was coming from the fifth floor. Firefighters made their way to the fifth floor where they found a moderate smoke condition. As firefighters investigated, they found there had been a grease fire in the kitchen of apartment 505, and the fire was out. Further investigation found that Dorothy Deacon, a 91-year-old resident of apartment 508, noticed the fire and had grabbed a fire extinguisher from the hallway, entered the apartment that was on fire, and extinguished the fire. Right. 91 years old. Unfortunately, as I indicated, Ms. Dorothy passed away suddenly and unexpectedly on September 3, 2017, before she could be recognized for her action. Again, Dorothy had lived at the Delphia House for eight years. She had class and integrity, and nothing could stop her. Dorothy loved a good joke and was known for keeping a clean apartment. She has been described as feisty and was always quick with a comeback. She was a two-time cancer survivor who loved her hats and her dial-doll collection. Through her work with the JCC and the Red Cross, Dorothy taught hundreds of York children to swim. She also volunteered as a court-appointed special advocate in the CASA program. In this role, she was an advocate on behalf of abused and neglected children to make sure their best interests were heard in court. So I, along with the City of York Department of Fire Rescue, recognizes the action Dorothy Deacon took on August 12, 2017, and are proud to announce the establishment of the Dorothy Deacon Distinguished Citizen of the Year Award. This award will be given every year to a citizen who exhibits the positive qualities and spirit of Dorothy Deacon. The annual award will recognize a member of the community who goes above and beyond in providing extraordinary service for the safety and well-being of our community and be presented by the fire department. So the first-ever Dorothy Deacon Distinguished Citizen Award is presented posthonorally to Dorothy Deacon on this 24th day of October 2017. And it is signed by myself and the fire chief.
And I'm sorry if I get like brucy, but thank you. Thank you so much. It means a lot. It means so much. Mom was always very vital. Saturday morning before this fire, she confided in me that she felt as though she was on her way out. So this really represents the strength of the human spirit. And when there was a need, she was able to gather up all that strength, go across the hall, get the fire extinguisher, put the fire extinguisher out, and then check on her neighbor who was chair-bound. So we're very honored to have this award this year and for it to be the first one. And it'll be a yearly award for someone else that displays that human strength that we all have within us. So thank you very much.
So the chief doesn't want to say anything, but when he brought this information to us, it was during one of our Monday morning cabinet meetings. And the cabinet was sort of like 91 years old? I mean, and she picked up the extinguisher and took it upon herself to put the fire out. So again, the City of York, and I know the residents of Delphia House are grateful for her heroic actions. Thank you so very much again.
Yeah, when my firefighters came back and told me about this call, again, I was like, what happened? So I read their reports and they, you know, got with the crews that were there. And again, as I was telling the mayor about it, obviously something we wanted to do. I did not get to know Dorothy, obviously somebody I wish I would've got to know. But, and thanks to the family in the Delphia House staff for all your help in getting this put together for us. Thank you.
So the reason why we're here, good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming out this morning to attend our town hall meeting. This is our last one of the year. It is our quarterly meeting. My cabinet members and I are extremely excited to be with you this morning. And we've been planning and talking about this meeting for some time. So thank you again for hosting us. Throughout this meeting, we will share with you what your city government has to offer to you as our residents. We'll listen to your concerns and ideas on how we can make our city a better place together to work, live, play, and even be retired. I also would like to recognize the other elected officials who might be with us today. I know Councilwoman Judy Ritter-Dixon is here. Please stand up. And I think that might be it for city-elected officials. There is a West York Borough elected official here, Alan Van Der Slu, who just hangs out with us, too. We appreciate him being here with us. And again, thank you to the White Rose Senior Center, Housing Authority, for your generosity and hosting us today. We appreciate the working relationship we have with you and appreciate being able to provide the opportunity for community members to be here today. We would also like to thank Rabbit Transit for being a partner/sponsor in all, everything all, today with us and ensuring that some of our older Yorke's had transportation to be here with us, too, today. So thank you very much, Rabbit. For the record, some of you may know, I enjoy hosting and relocating, if you will, our town hall meetings in the community, where our community resides, and at varying times to try and accommodate everyone. So this is our first at 10:30 in the morning. But we've held our town hall meetings in all sorts of different places. Since taking office as your mayor, I've held them at the United Way, the Lincoln Fire Station, city council chambers, Lincoln Charter School. Smith was our last, Smith School was our last place we were at. So we try to get out and about. And I'm grateful to all of our past hosts, our future hosts, and again, just for having the opportunity to locate our meeting at venues throughout our beautiful York. As always, there are several events and activities, programs, and initiatives occurring in our city. And I just want to highlight a few of those before we start hearing from our directors. Excuse me. If you're up to it at lunchtime on Wednesday, tomorrow, we're gonna try to squeeze, if the weather holds up, a couple more walks in the park. But tomorrow, we're having one, excuse me, Thursday at noon, Thursday, not tomorrow, Thursday at noon at Penn Park, we will be walking in the park. We meet at Beaver and College Avenue for a nice brisk stroll around our beautiful historic Penn Park. And we encourage residents and citizens alike to come on out and be part of that walk. At noontime is our lunch break-in. We try to get our walk on. Friday, we will host another community game night. We have had wonderful opportunities for families to have fun in our York. Our community game night has hosted families again to play board games together since about April, maybe even before then, February timeframe. And it's been a lot of fun. We do this monthly. And Friday, this upcoming Friday, is our game night at 6 o'clock until 8 p.m. at the Bonnie Grimes Gym. And we encourage everyone to come on out and have some fun. We likely will have some pizza, chips, soda, along with a good selection of board games as well. So come on out and get your game on and enjoy some fun with your family. Customer service, just a reminder to all, customer service is still very important and extremely important to me. And I've asked that our staff in the City of York respond to all of our concerns, our neighbors, in a timely manner, as well as with respect. I've urged our staff to respond to all calls and emails within 24 hours when possible, while understanding that all of our answers may not be in that timeframe. We at least want you to know you are going to get something back from us. Our website also has the ability for individuals to share their ideas just by logging on www.yorkcity.org. You can share concerns and ideas and also find out a host of information that's happening in our city and things that you might find of interest. You can also visit our website and, again, to keep abreast of all the activities. And for those who are really tech savvy, I know there was an iPad class going on as we were setting up. But you can download the city's app and find out and be in touch with us, just like that, from your cellphone. So if you go to our website, at the very top is a red bar telling you how to download the app. And our website, again, is yorkcity.org. Stay connected to your city government, and you can do it that way. And finally, today is Tuesday. Who knows what that is in the City of York? Oh, thank you. Take 10 minutes to clean up our city. I'd like to encourage everyone to continue to take 10 minutes on Tuesday to keep our city clean. Honestly, that is all it takes. Pick up a little litter in front of you, put it in the trash, and keep it moving. But you can also do this on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Okay, you guys have heard my story. Great. All right. And the city actually is looking cleaner, so let's continue to do that, because it takes all of us, everyone of us, to do our part in making our city the cleanest and the best placed place it can be. So that's my intro. We will, again, I have more, obviously, as we go throughout this morning. But I don't want to take anything away from my team here, who's with us. We have, all the way to my immediate left, our fire chief. You already saw him. He will have some comments for you as well. His name is Dave Michael. I just keep saying fire chief. Fire Chief Dave Michaels, Police Chief Wes Kelly, our Community Economic Development Director, Shavaski Buffalo, our Acting Director of Public Works, Chaz Green, and Money Man, Business Administrator, Michael Dowery, on the end. So I'm so happy that they're all here with us. So I'm gonna start that way, chief, fire chief, and we'll work our way across here and end with Michael. Come on up.
Good morning, everyone. I have a few, I want to let you know what your firefighters have been doing and some programs that we have that may be beneficial to you. First of all, we have been busy. To date, our firefighters have been out on 2,790 calls. Just to put that in perspective, last year, we ran 3,100 calls. So we're on pace to break that for this year. Firefighters remain busy with calls and training. We just put some training programs together to get our firefighters certified to national levels and to make sure that you have a well-trained, competent fire department should you need them. We are getting in that period of time where we're starting to see an increase of fires. We're getting into that cold heating season. And just a reminder, some of the common causes that we see of fires are cooking fires, electrical, and for some reason, discarded cigarettes. We seem to get a lot of fires with those there. So just some things you can do for that, obviously. If we do have any smokers, make sure that those cigarettes or smoking materials are discarded properly. Cooking, please make sure you are staying with whatever you're cooking and keep a watch on that. Keep your appliances clean. And then the electrical, and again, as we get into the heating season, we just saw a pretty significant fire last week due to an electrical heater. So please remember, those electrical heaters are fine if you get cold, but they're not to be your sole source of heat. They are just a temporary heat source. And please make sure you have the proper extension cords if you are going to use those to prevent any fires. Also, too, just briefly, I know we have a lot of residents here in apartments and in buildings, you may want to consider renters insurance. When we do encounter people that experience these fires, they are devastating. I mean, pretty much all their stuff. We do get the Red Cross in to help immediately, and the Red Cross does a great job for our residents. Renters insurance, it's relatively cheap, and it's something you may want to look into. And if you do have that policy, you may want to just, a good time to review that and see what actually it will cover in the event of a fire for you. And if you need any information, we do not have a program or endorse any one particular company. But if you would like any information on that, please let us know, and we can get you in contact with someone. Our Fire Prevention Bureau, they remain busy as well. They are out, you'll see them out conducting inspections of mostly commercial properties, so making sure that public buildings that you may be in are safe. They also maintain the operational permits. And again, it gets us a chance to get out and make sure that, see our buildings and make sure that all the systems are up to speed and where they should be and that they are safe. You will see them out providing public education. If you do have a group that you know is in need of that, please give us a call. And we can, we do fire extinguisher training, fire safety, just basic fire safety. And then, of course, we have our apparatus. If somebody would like an apparatus display, we can do that as well. We have been working on obtaining a fire safety house. That is a, it's a trailer that we can take out to kids or older adults, and it's a good way to simulate what an actual emergency is. So we can put some simulated fake smoke in it, practice escape drills, and practice calling 911, those type things. So it is, it is a great tool that we are working on trying to obtain that for our city residents. Our EMA, our Emergency Management, they continue to work closely with local officials, county officials, state officials, and federal, make sure we have plans that are up to date in case of any type of disaster, that we're able to meet those needs. They do at times, there are none right now, but CERT classes, which is Community Emergency Response Team training. What that is, is we can take citizens that are interested in helping out, give them some basic training. And in that disaster, where emergency responders would be stretched thin, we can take the CERT team members to step in and help with some basic rescue and disaster techniques that would be needed. Emergency preparedness, again, we want everybody to be prepared. Some things that we do have available that you may be interested in, one is we've teamed up with QDOT Engineering, and they have a system called Plumas Auto Mist System. So it's basically a portable sprinkler system. And what it's designed for is if somebody, and a good application for it is if there's an elderly person that may have trouble moving out or moving, in case of a fire, they would have difficulty exiting. This system is just basically a tank of water. It has a detector that can sense heat. Once that activates, it can dial a call. It can call 911, it can call the fire department, it can text family members. There's a lot of programming we can do in that. And then there also is a nozzle. So once it determines that there's a heat or that the heat rises, most likely there's a fire, it'll just spray a mist out. It's just a very fine mist. And what that's gonna do is allow you extra time in the event of a fire. You know, we find a fire, very quickly, it's gonna flash over. And once that happens, everything in the room gets to a temperature that ignites. But this system is gonna help keep that cool and give our firefighters some extra time to get in and get that person out. QDOT has made one available to us. So, you know, we can get that out free of charge and get that installed somewhere. And then also, if it is something you're interested in, we can get you additional information on purchasing of these systems. It's a very nice system that gives you some comfort and protection for people in need. Also available yet is, through York County, it's called Smart 911. And we do have some information over on the table for you today. What Smart 911 is, is in the, you actually can put information in before an emergency starts or happens. So you can put in phone numbers, contact people, medicine that you're on, location of family, pictures, layouts of your home. There's so much information you can put in. Then it's tied to your phone number. So if you need to call 911, it's just additional information they're gonna have. It's good for fire, police, and EMS, all types of information you could put in. Children, if you have children or grandkids, you can put information in that. And God forbid, any type of abduction, that information would be there already. It could include pictures and information that could get out to responders immediately as they're responding. So do consider that. Also, we are offering now a residential Knox Home Box Program. So you'll see most of the buildings here, if you notice, on the Broad Park Manor buildings, on the Delphia House, you'll see a box. And what it is, it's a lockbox that only the fire department has a key to it. Inside of that box is keys to get into an apartment or a home. We now have those available for residents. So if you know somebody that they may, you're afraid they may have some type of emergency where they're not gonna be able to get to the door, let an emergency responder in, this is a safe, secured system. The box would be mounted somewhere on the property. We would be able to get there, open that box up, and get a key to get into the residence. It's good, and if there's an alarm sounding, say somebody's not even home, but there's an alarm sounding, we can get in. There's no damage, don't have to worry about a door being broken or a window being broken. We can get in, see what the problem is, take care of that quickly, you know, secure the property, and put the key back. So that is available. Now, it's a voluntary, you know, program. It's not required, you don't have to do it. But if you know somebody that it may be beneficial for, you would be responsible for the price of the box. And there is some additional information on that over here as well. So please look at that. If you have any questions on that, we'll be available and we can answer on that. But it is a pretty good program. Also, we still have available, if you're not aware, in the city, we have White Rose Ambulance that does all the emergency medical calls. Some time ago, and just some background on this, a resident approached Mayor Bracy and asked about an ambulance subscription program. And if you're not familiar how that works, basically, it's a fee that you pay once a year. And if you need to get transported by an ambulance, they will still bill your insurance, if you have insurance, but then you are not responsible for any other cost. A resident approached Mayor Bracy and said, hey, they had a relative that had been transported several times and got a pretty significant bill on that. Ask about this program. So through contacting White Rose, we're able to put together an ambulance subscription program that is available to our city residents. So if you do not have that and you'd like additional information, please let us know, and we can get that to you. It's a pretty good program. Again, it gives you that comfort of if you need, don't be afraid to call an ambulance. We hear that a lot of times. We think we should call, but you're thinking about cost and some other things. This just takes that away. You know, if you need an ambulance, call an ambulance, get the help that you need, and then you don't have to worry about all that financial burden that goes with it. The mayor mentioned some of the tech-savvy folks that we have here. We are active on Facebook and Twitter, York City Fire, if you want to follow us or look us up. We try to get good information out there on fire prevention, messages that are timely. And also, in the event, or if we are out on emergency, we can get some information out to our residents, such as streets that may be closed, areas that you're gonna see some congestions, those type things that we do get out there. Also, on the website, there is a fire department site on the website, so you can check out. We have some additional information on that. And finally, one more thing. We still continue with our smoke detector program. So anybody in need of smoke detectors, please call us. We'll come out, install those for free. We have some information on that over here as well that is available for you. So please, everybody should have a smoke detector now. If that's something you need, give us a call. Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be rather brief, because I'd rather, I could talk about a million things, I'd rather talk to you about what you want to hear about. So I'm just gonna give you a brief overview of our agency. Everyone knows from watching police shows what cops do, or at least think they do. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes. But here in the City of York, you have 103 police officers, and we have around 35 to 40 civilian staff members that help run the police department. Within that, we have a patrol division, which is what most people see, the police cars that are out there answering 911 calls when you call and ask for assistance. They come to help you out. We also have our detective division, and those guys are the guys that investigate the more serious crimes, and girls, such as homicides and shootings and robberies and those sorts of, those sorts of things. One of our most active parts of our police department is what we call our Neighborhood Enforcement Unit. And that unit is set up in specific neighborhoods within the city, and those officers are assigned just to that geographical area. They get to know the residents that are in that area, they get to know the businesses, they get to know the good people, the bad people. And they're basically problem solvers. They're out there working on whatever issues come up, from a shooting, a homicide, all the way down to lights being out on the street, abandoned vehicles, those sorts of things. So they get involved in a myriad of things, and they are, they're very active. Another big area of our police department that the community gets involved with is our Community Services Division. And if you ever need us to come out to talk to you about things about safety, about burglaries and thefts, and how you can protect yourself, even, we even go out and do active shooter training now for civilians to discuss with people what to do if someone comes into your building with a gun. They also run our youth outreach every month down at the Martin Memorial Library. We have officers to get together with young kids, and they play video games with them, they share a meal with them, and they get to just spend some time one-on-one with the kids. And the kids get to meet the officers in a different environment from what they're used to, used to doing. We also do a summer bowling program. And I've been here for 29 years, and they've done it ever since I've been here. Not sure how long it went on before that, but every summer, we pick up children from different neighborhoods twice a week, bus them over to the bowling alley, and the officers spend time bowling with them, again, eat lunch with them, and get to spend time, one-on-one, personal time with them. We talked about the, everyone keeps talking about technology, and the police department also runs on, is on various sites. We have a Facebook page, we have a Twitter page. One of the things, if you have a phone and you're into using the apps, we also have our own app. The mayor talked about the app for the city, but the police department has its own app that's on iPhones or the Androids. And with that app, we push information out to you. You can also go on there, there's a crime map on there that'll show you what's actively going on within each of the neighborhoods. You can pull your neighborhood up and say, okay, what's happening? As our officers do reports, they go into the computer system, and they go right on this app, so you can keep track of what's going on. So that's just a basic overview. Again, I want to know what you guys want to talk about, so once we go to the question and answer, I'll be more than happy to speak deeper on the topics that you're interested in. All right?
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Hello, and thank you for having us here today. My name is Shavaski Buffalo, and I have the pleasure of serving as Mayor Bracy's interim Director of Economic and Community Development. And if any of you are curious about what that is, unlike these gentlemen to my left, I don't put out fires, and chief creates a backdrop for me to do my work, because the first line of what I do in terms of community and economic development is established by law and order set in place by the police department. And unlike my colleagues to the right of me, who also have perfunctory tasks, I'm more or less the quality-of-life person for the City of York. I oversee four bureaus, specifically Permits Planning and Zoning, the Health Bureau, Housing Services, as well as Economic Development and some work with the Redevelopment Authority. And what we do more or less is pretty much try to establish investor confidence for folks to come into our community and contribute funds and resources to do projects and do activities. So along those lines, I like to give you a quick rundown on a few projects in the city that you may see in your travels, and talk about a couple of programs that we have in place. And not be too long, but give you an opportunity to kind of pivot and ask me specific questions or areas of concern that you might have. So we'll start with something in your immediate neighborhood. Many of you are familiar with the former Danskin site. It's at 300 North State Street. It's a four-acre site now that's currently co-mingled debris and construction activities that was not finished. to develop 56 family-style residences at that site, and the intention is to have those projects be, well, not projects, those residences be intended for families that are of working-class means and affordable, unlike some of the other conventional projects that are popping up as of lately downtown. The developer has agreed to put up a significant amount of the money to remediate and abate a lot of the construction debris that's on site, and our hope is that we can get some traction on funding sources in the next year to make that work come to pass. We've recently submitted, as of Friday of last week, an application to Pennsylvania Housing Finance Authority for some low-income housing tax credits, which is very instrumental in making these projects go, and we're hoping that in the year 2018, we'll get notification of an award, and in 2019, we can actually see some significant improvements made to getting that site up to speed, and hopefully redeveloped into a higher, more productive use than where it sits right now. As a complement to that project, again, near you, not too far away, further up on Broad Street, at 127 North Broad Street, we have a private investor that's taken some of his own personal capital and purchased the old Nick Colletti warehouse. It used to be formerly known as Weaver Piano and Manufacturing. That building, 40,000 square feet, has actually started to see some construction activity take place. The young man that's doing the project has started some of the demolition, and he hopes to have houses, actually market-rate apartments for rent as early as the third quarter of 2018. So here we have two significant projects in your immediate backyard and your neighbors that we hope to see continue the momentum of investment in our city that we've been able to see over the last five to 10 years. Further, further west on Market Street, you may have noticed near the Martin Memorial Library, the old J.E. Baker Building's going through a renovation now. That building was sold by the York County Heritage Trust Museum, and purchased by a development group based out of Harrisburg, and those folks are actually taking that building and adaptively reusing and converting it into 40 more apartments. So we're seeing a resurgence of people that want to come back to the city, more individuals that actually take pride in the fact that we're gonna have people that walk our streets, that want to be productive citizens and a part of this movement, and with these three projects, we're hoping to see more and more people continue to make significant investments and strides in our area. A little different in focus, but one that's still important to me nonetheless, because again, the economic development side is fun in its own right, but the community development side is something that I've tried to pattern myself in my efforts after our own, you know, dear mayor. We've been making some significant improvements to one of the community resources that's been around for quite some time. You all know it is the Vonnie Grimes Gym. Vonnie Grimes Gym has gone through a recent facelift and will be one of three phases that I'm not gonna steal too much of Chaz's thunder. He'll talk about the subsequent pieces thereafter. But it's part of our effort to do a little more detailed focus on the neighborhoods and get a little more involved outside of the central business district, and engage more of the residents where they are in their specific homes and their neighborhoods and where they actually interface at. So as of lately, we've made some improvements by virtue of a tax credit program from five local investors to basically contribute funds to see some improvements made to that building, both this year, next year, and the following year. And again, we'll continue those efforts along with the South Duke Street Neighborhood Association in years to come, and we're working currently with the Northeast Neighborhood Association, which is a stone's throw away, and some of those efforts. We're undertaking a study with JMT that was established around the time the stadium district was built to update and see where those, see where things have changed, and see where there may be additional opportunities to make some improvements and investments in that particular corridor of the city. And then one that's recently arisen, two years ago, Mayor Bracy had the privilege of honoring Dr. McMillan, is one of the people that have pioneered some efforts in the east end of town. We're working with Emmanuel CDC, Emmanuel Community Development Corporation to tackle some work that they have over at St. Joseph's School, to bring a community center and some neighborhood-focused activities to the Wellington side of the city, one that really hasn't had much of a presence in terms of investment in the past few years in that space. With regards to programs, we'll be undertaking a landlord university again this year, this is our second year instituting that. We currently have about 60 to 65% of our city is now rental housing, and because of that, we're seeing more and more individuals that take their money and buy apartment buildings. Some are good corporate citizens and manage their properties, you know, properly, some take the easy way out and just basically let the properties continue to go along, and then there's a few that really, really are bad actors that we're hoping to weed out and get them to improve the standard of the housing stock in the city. And along those lines, we hope to basically get those folks that are interested in becoming landlords to start off on the right foot, and we're offering them this year a six-week session in all the facets of real estate investment and hopefully management, starting with financing and ending up with the entitlement process, and hopefully anything that we can bring to service to them, to hopefully use it as a policy tool to get the behavior that we want, to have more housing that's created, that's quality and decent, not just available, but quality and decent housing for the residents that live in the city. And there's a complimentary piece to that. Many of the landlords have said, well, you're making us go to school, what about the tenants? And there's a compliment to that as well. So we're actually gonna engage on, engage upon a tenant university, upon request by neighborhood associations, when folks want us to actually come out and talk to the residents in their particular neighborhood, to talk to the folks that live in their, in their immediate area on how to be better residents, when to put your trash out, what not to do to affect the quality of life for your neighbors or your folks that live down the street, and we intend to take that out as often and as frequently as requested. Unlike Landlord University, which runs for six weeks, the Tenant University, we intend to do in a tight two hours, and have some fair housing components there, to talk about landlord tenant rights, have from our Building Code Official and our Permits Planning and Zoning Department, the expectations of those folks that actually rent, and I'll give you an example, rather than tie up their trash in little Walmart bags and put them out on Market Street, the expectation that they put them in a larger trash receptacle and not have it blow up and down the corridor on any particular day. So elements like that, we hope to address and bring to bear. And in closing, one thing I wanted to bring out to you, one that's become a pet project of mine by Directive of the mayor, we've gotten intimately involved with the repositioning of Penn Market. The City Redevelopment Authority was asked to purchase the building, and this past Saturday, we had an excellent fall fest. We're actively looking for folks that want to volunteer and/or serve as, to be friends of Market, and we hope to continue some of the efforts that we have over the past couple of years in terms of making an effort to reach out and actively engage as many people in the civic process as possible and be a part of this movement that we now see in the resurgence of York. So that's all I have, I look forward to your questions in a few moments, and with that, I pass to Mr. Chaz Green.
Hello, good morning. How's everyone doing? Oh, good, that's good to hear. Just wanted to address a couple of things, some items that will affect you guys directly coming up in the next couple of months. Want to start off with, there's gonna be some, some work being done on King Street here. It's gonna be from Broad Street heading down to Sherman, it's gonna be, the water company's gonna be in, as well as the gas company doing some work, and when the project is done, the streets will be repaved, so there'll be some new streets going down from King Street, down King Street from Broad to Sherman, all right? So that's gonna be happening, the project will begin in the beginning of January, so just wanted to let you guys know, so you start seeing some trucks out there and hearing some digging, you know what's going on, all right? Also, I know about last, it was either last week or the week before that, we had some lights out here on Broad Street. There were some underground wiring issues that we were able to get in and get them fixed, so the lights should be up and running now, we haven't had any calls, but just wanted to give you a number, if you guys are running into an issue where the lights are out, telephone poles or some of the streetlights that we have out there, please feel free to call, the number is 717-845-9351, and I'll be here after, I can give you the number again as well, but that's our electrical bro, so we can make sure we address those issues with you, okay? Also, we have some upcoming events through our Public Works Department, Light Up York, which is gonna be our first time, we light the tree downtown. This year it's gonna be on a Saturday, this will be the first time that we've done it on a Saturday, so it will be from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Saturday, Saturday, I'm sorry, November 2nd, I'm sorry, Saturday, December 2nd, I'm sorry, Saturday, December 2nd, all right, and it'll be from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., so if you'd like, please come out and check us out. Also, we'll have our New Year's Eve celebration as well, which will be December 31st, and it will begin at 6:00 p.m. as well, okay? Also, to kind of piggyback with Mr. Shulvaski, Buffalo was speaking on with the Vonnie Grimes Gym, we have a mural that's gonna be going up, and the mural will be in the first week of November from our local artists that we have here in town, so I think it's gonna be great, followed by November 4th, which will be the Vonnie Grimes Awards as well, so please, if you guys are available, definitely would like to have you guys come out and celebrate with us, all right? I don't want to take up too much time, because obviously we want to do some question and answers for you guys, I'd like to hear your concerns, so one thing I'm big on is, I think, is communication, so I just want to make sure I can get our number out to our department, so if you guys ever have any concerns or any issues or, that we can talk and we can work together, and we can get these issues addressed, all right? But thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Good morning, everyone. I'm gonna bank on the fact that the last thing you want is just another person speaking one way to you, so I'm gonna make my piece real, real quick. Unlike the front-line colleagues that we have next to me here, my, my position is more back-office administration. I serve as a business administrator in charge of IT, finance, and HR, so I'm helping to put the plan together behind the scenes, but hopefully you guys don't, don't see too much of us. I did bring today here some pamphlets that are over on the side table for what we developed as a five-year financial plan. When things, when I started in 2015, the cries for bankruptcy and other takeover-type initiatives were pretty strong, so the mayor and I worked together to put together a quick five-year plan to somewhat stabilize the city. Since then, we've, we've changed our focus to work on more of a long-term plan, no different than our personal situations where you plan for retirement and then work your way backwards. So we're not looking for the get-rich-quick scheme next year, hopefully something does come along. Hopefully, all of you are playing Powerball and would be willing to share with, with the city government when you hit, but we're taking more of a long-term approach, and that may not be music to everyone's ears, but we gotta plan it out and work towards stability, so we're looking at a 20- to 30-year plan, and then we'll, we'll work our way backwards from there. But the five-year plan is what's on the table here, and you'll hear more about the long-term planning in the months and days to come. Probably the biggest item that we have on the table right now is the 2018 budget. Mid-November, we'll be going to City Council and presenting the 2018 budget. Those hearings start, I believe November 9th is the first budget hearing. Encourage, welcome, this, this room is beautiful, by the way. Most public meetings that we have, there's, you could whisper, and someone could hear it on the other side of the room, it's how empty the rooms really are, so it's, it's great to see more than five people come out for a meeting, and to have over 100 people here today is just awesome. So what I'm saying is, I encourage you all to participate and continue to participate in the civic process, and probably the most public piece for us is the budget hearings that start next month. Welcome all, all of your input. Through that 2018 budget, though, we're, we're working hard to maintain the public safety staffing levels, take on some more initiatives in the community and economic development as well as public works, and to continue to raise the quality of service that is provided to our, to our citizens. But as everyone else, I'm anxious for the Q&amp;A session to hear your feedback. Two more things that I'll make quick announcements about, announcements about. For the entrepreneurial-minded folks, we do have a diverse, diverse and minority business forum coming up next week at York College, be an holiday session Monday, helping minority businesses, diverse businesses, understand the process of how to contract with the city, how to contract with the state, Wellspan, York College, the county, the list goes on and on, but whatever we can do to help facilitate that process, I encourage you all to check out our website and register for that event. And then the last thing I'll leave you with are board vacancies. As we continue in our civic duties and our, and our, and our giving back, there's a wealth of knowledge in this room, and we, we need it. We need to continue to give that to the next generation as, as we continue to move on. There are many opportunities to contribute, to volunteer, and probably the most prominent would be our board positions, our authorities. Government, there's, there's many bureaucratic levels to it, but all I, what I'll leave it with is that, please check out the city website, please talk to us, and we'll incur, or we'll help point you in the right direction of where your career experience may have been and where that could best serve in a volunteering, volunteering capacity moving forward. Unfortunately, we can't afford to pay everyone, but, but as we all try to give back, we encourage you all to do the same, and I know that you do, but I'm just saying, through city government, there are, there are opportunities there for you to contribute that way as well. So thank you for having us, and available for questions and answers.
Okay, so we heard a lot of information, a lot. We want to hear from, you heard a lot, we want to hear from you now, so I don't believe we have a microphone in here. If you have a question or a comment, we would ask that you please stand up, speak as loud as you can, so that we can hear you up here, and we will proceed to respond. Please don't be shy. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is David Williams. I was back home here, I was going for a half a year, it stopped a lot, and I was just on my bed, and I was kind of with a heartache cancer, I'm trying to find out like a solution to that way, like when you're sick and, or people that battle with heartache cancer, that way relieves a lot of frustration and stuff, and that's what I was, since I'm back home to stay, I feel, I can help, that's why people pay, like, they said, I'm gonna run, I'm gonna survive, I'm gonna be here until 7:30.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, or sir, sorry.
Two quick things, first thing, please have your people reintroduce, because I don't know who that last gentleman was. I can't hear. I don't know who the last gentleman was.
She said green.
Michael. Michael. Now, thank you. Okay, thank you. I don't know how many seatless supplies, I had a car for most of my life, so the last two years, I've been riding public transportation. You're changing dates on things to Saturday, that's great, because Friday nights are a pain in the city. The same problem with trying to go to things in the county on the weekends, there are no buses. Same time's gonna affect them if they want to come into events, there's no buses, so I don't know, maybe you can talk to Rite of Transit about that, because I like to go to things in Columbia or Dover or Hanover, and you can't get there. And they might, they probably been coming into things here on Friday, things don't go on Saturday, they can't.
We're animating this one.
I have a question for you. When will you have money to fix the road?
Which road are you talking about? There are a lot of good ones, there are a lot that have been repaired, there are some that are underway of being repaired, and some of it, I'm not passing a buck, does rely on our utilities getting their work done, too. So, Chaz, you want to talk a little bit more about that?
That's a good question, I am the road guy. One thing that we have is, we are, we are working on some roads, and with some of the, the water company work that's going on, where they're changing out mains in the middle of the streets, what happened is, we're actually getting some work done from the, the gas companies and the water company, are gonna be covering a lot of streets for us over the next two years. Also for us is, there's some streets that we like, we would like to target, we would like to hit, but the first thing we have to do is, in our monthly utility meetings, is we have to sit down with them, one, to find out where their projects at, because if we go ahead and we start, we do, we, we reg, we, we do a road over, and then what happens is, they come in, and then they're getting and changing out utilities, so we just have to kind of strategically plan ways to do it. We did just do some work on New Bay, and then also on Pennsylvania Avenue, but we are gonna try and get around this way, and then plus with the utility companies, you'll start seeing a lot of roads being repaved over the next two years, like I said, so. But please, if you ever have any road traffic issues on, or anything we can help out with, please feel free to call down to City Hall, and we can definitely address it right away. If it's something with a pothole, I mean, we, obviously, we know, before winter's coming, obviously, we'd like to get them addressed now, but if there's anything that, that you guys see when you're out, you know, moving around, please let us know, and we'll take care of it, all right? Thank you, though, I appreciate that question.
Yes, we, we do have some troubling streets, okay? And then I think Ms. Linda, and I'll come around this way, okay? If you guys want to stand up, too, that'd be wonderful. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, this is where, Chaz, I just moved back here, I'm gonna have to, since I got back, there are places where you got no right turn, you don't make a right turn, but the signs is hit by bushes. See, I got $170 ticket, if I may see a sign. Yeah, but there's no problem, but there's a problem, because a lot of, a lot of them still dry, you see your citizens, but they're still dry, and those signs need to be moved out, or you can put some kind of light or something, or you just get planted and get to it, which you gotta, um...
When we get, when we, oh, I'm sorry.
And also, I know that y'all have changed it, you can't make a right on Philadelphia, Joyce, I missed, you know, you got your, you don't know what, you know... I missed, uh, you know, you got your, you don't know what, yeah, yeah, I almost got hit there, I'm dead. Some people still making that turn, because they don't, I, you know, the little sign you got up there, um, on the pole there, it's hard to see for something. But they've been used to be, they make that turn for so long, now, they not paying that sign attention. And they still making that turn, and I almost got hit there, so maybe, you know, you wanna do something different with that sign, just so people will actually see it, sit in there, so you can't make that turn.
Okay. I got that one, but the first one that you mentioned, I didn't get the street, but when we're done, maybe we can talk a little bit, and you can let me know what location that was?
Oh, oh, okay, you want to work that, take it out?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. All right, thank you.
I've been thinking about this, but, Mr. Brady, because every time I call in about the Colbert thing filthy after a rain, a crew comes out and clears the Colbert, especially over on Richmond and Tobbler Street. Now, I've got a problem with the lights. There's the fancy lights on the corner of Pine Street and West Princess Street, they blink, and that's a high-traffic area for drug traffic, and I like to, the lights be on during the night. Thank you.
I believe it was, yes, sir?
Talking about the street and the utility holders, uh, we have a street across here called Charles, and it, you know, nothing really all in the street, except there'll be a mountain goat to get through.
Okay, thank you. And I think it was someone, yes, ma'am?
Hi, uh, do you have a repaid alleys of Mystic Avenue, right by my garage, because it's a catchword twelfth, and winter's coming, and it's gonna get worse, so I was just curious if you ever did research on it.
Okay, thank you. We do have a, a schedule of, I'm gonna just let Chaz come up here, okay? No, but we do, uh, alleys and streets, as we can, too, and we'll get yours and find out where it is on the list, if you will? That, cool, Chaz? Okay. So, don't leave without giving him that alley name. All right, thank you. Yes, sir?
Broad and Philadelphia.
Broad and Philadelphia.
Yeah, the rapid bus stop there. Sometimes we go to catch the bus there, it's four or five cars parked there, and the bus has to stop way back. And most of us, like myself, I suffer from vertigo and COPD, and it's very hard for me to walk. I was wondering why, I mean, it's been over a year, and when I go down there, there's four or five cars parked there, by the bus stop, which causes the bus, like I said, to have to park way back.
Yeah, I couldn't see who was asking the question, so I apologize. Okay. I'll go down and check that out, now that you brought it up, and see how it's posted. If it's posted for no parking right there, then there shouldn't be any cars there, and if you come across a situation where you get down there and there's cars parked there and they're not supposed to be, you can give us a call and have an officer come down to, to deal with it. But when I leave here today, I'll go by there and take a look at the situation and see how it's posted. All right? Sure.
That guy back there with that Eagles jersey on.
Down by the stadium, on George and Art Street, down by the stadium, there's not a left-turn signal. That is horrendous, especially when baseball is happening down, down there. Off of George, and making a left turn on Art Street, there's not a left, left turn signal. Just a light, and you, it's really rough making that left turn.
There is some studies, some work being done right now, looked at on George Street, and how best to move traffic along, and the pedestrians, to include the rail trail. So, some of these concerns, at least on George Street, you may find being addressed in the future, in the near or future, but some of these other ones, all, all are nuisances and quality of life issues. You're absolutely right. Thank you for bringing them to our attention. You can give us a call at any time, as Chaz said as well, too. We still respond to phone calls. I know you heard a lot about tech savvy and whatever else, but please call City Hall with these concerns. We are constantly, the downtown officers are constantly at Philadelphia and George Street, for example, pulling over people who still try to make that left-hand turn there. It, it's been around for a while now, but we, we do try to get compliance, so, and a lot of these potholes and streets and those sorts of things, we, we can look it up and tell you where things are at as far as being repaired, too. But there are some things, Mr. Jackson, on, on, off of George Street, that you'll, you're gonna be seeing, courtesy of the rail trail and every other work. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, people over here, they're concerned about the safety, walking the streets and trying to get around. What can be done? They're saying, you're getting around in the city if you have to walk.
Okay, are we concerned about the sidewalks?
They're concerned about getting around in the city with so much violence and crime going on.
Okay, all right. Is that what you wanted to ask me, ma'am?
That's, that's those questions they have.
Okay. Is that what you wanted to ask?
Yeah, we all have the same questions.
She is always on me and giving me all kinds of questions and concerns, so I wanted to make sure. We're all, are you gonna translate then, too? Okay, so let us give you, let us give you some answers, okay? Because we're all concerned about the general public safety of the city of York.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, it's an overall, general question that, that I can't specifically answer right here. As the mayor said, we're all concerned about that. Our officers are out working every day to try and, and deal with those situations. I think probably the best thing to do, I'm assuming from the T-shirts that you all come here quite often, probably the best thing to do would be to get our Community Services Division out here and give a general presentation on how to stay safe walking around the city, things to look for, things to do if, if you have any problems. And then I'll, I'll figure out who I need to work through, too.
Well, actually, we actually had it all set up in November, that Jackie and Officer Fells are coming out to do active shooting. So, we have all this covered. We have him come in periodically throughout the year.
Yep, there you go. So, what, what was the date on that?
My gosh, it's like November, I don't know. Off the top of my head, November 19th, sticks in my head, but I don't know if that's true or not.
Okay, thank you.
And you heard some of the other directors say the same thing. I mean, we will come out to your groups, to your associations, to your meetings, and, and share with you about your community, and ways that we can engage closer with you, particularly around public safety, that both the police and fire, and any of our directors will come to your meetings. So, we have a component in the police department, our Community Services Division, it does just that. So, they'll be here. You guys need to be here, and we'll be able to assist you. Ms. Rosetta, I think you had a question?
No. Yes, one is, I have a handicap, and part of the, and my time, people park there, and I go, and I'm, I'm, they don't give you, I don't, I don't, because of people's money, which I started, I'm doing, they're licensed, a good job, and, and, so when I called 911, I could do a license number, and I also, I have to pay for that spot in the air, because anybody with a handicap sign, oh, there are parkers, and I come home, and I go, oh, shit, there's a lot of people, and I'll, they just write, so Tom Hamer's spot, and somebody goes, oh, whoa, there's a few, I don't know, I'm trying to watch the line, and I just, I look at it, I don't, I don't, I'm trying to, I'm sorry, I'm, 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 I just, I just, which is, this is, but, a labor, and I just have a lot of time for that. And also, um, I don't know if that, this concerns a senior or not, but I have a concern of seniors that have to pay all this money, you know, to not, you don't have, you don't have a case to come. And that's a problem with a lot of, I'm not, how, I have to choose, do I keep or buy my medical rights? And I'm, one, one, but, 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 I'm, 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 I'm...
Okay, just to answer your question about the handicap spaces, unfortunately, state law doesn't allow us to specify that that's your spot. So, anyone that has a state-issued handicap placard is allowed to park in any handicap space. If someone's parked there that doesn't have a placard, then, then we can deal with that issue. As far as the time period goes, you know, our officers, they get dispatched from 911, and it, things are prioritized. So, unfortunately, and I know this is a big, a big issue for you, because you wanna park in front of your house and be able to get back and forth to your home, your home very easily, but unfortunately, if our officers are being dispatched to domestics, or shootings, or those sorts of things, that takes a priority. So, that could be the delay sometimes in, in us getting out there. But if someone's parked there that doesn't have a placard, and we get there and they're there, we can ticket them and tow them and do what we need to do. The, the issue is, if they have a handicap placard, there's not much, unfortunately, that we can, we can do for you, other than try and run their tag, and talk to them, and explain to them why that space is actually there. But as we all know, not everyone is, is nice and courteous and understanding, so they're gonna, they're gonna pull in and they're gonna take that spot. Okay? Yes?
Oh, oh, that's a good point, because now, what if you see someone get out of a car, and you know these are teenagers, and got their grandmother or their grandfather's placard, it's got to hang in their car, and they get there, they park there, and you know that there's not a handicap. So, if you call the police, and they come out, what is their role? Are they supposed to question that person and make them show, because with my plaque in the state of Maryland, they give you a card, that you have to have in your wallet. I don't know, they didn't give you one up here. So, if you ain't got that card, and you just got that plaque, it's a stolen plaque, or somebody in your family that lets you use their plaque. So, what is the police's role in there? Does it make them move, or what?
Well, the first thing our officers should do is, is find out who they are and find out why they're using the placard, to make sure that they're, they're not the individual that's supposed to be using that placard. If it's not the individual that the placard is issued to, then we can take steps to have the placard revoked. But definitely, if you call and you have a question, our officers should be looking into it. If they don't, you need to call in and let a supervisor know, because that is an issue. I know it is, where people will, will utilize someone else's placard.
Yeah, y'all, you come a little more, it, my sister came this morning, it's like every other day, she had an officer come out about moving his car, and he, and they yell people, and I know there's nothing wrong with them, maybe they was a male, but...
They're abusing the purpose of the placard, unfortunately. But let us know, all right?
Ms. Linda?
My final question. We have this beautiful stadium, what is the city going to do about hosting more events at the stadium, which has plenty of handicap parking, is really well-lit, it's a safety button, has really great scenery?
We'll talk to them. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, I knew there was...
There's a new building going up there, what used to be Pennsylburn Dairy?
Yes, lots of steel.
When is that going to be, my question?
It is going to be a high school for the York Academy Regional Charter School.
Oh, my God.
Yes, yeah. In fact, I think around there, they have some posters. I know, at least in the restaurant, Central Family, they have some information about the construction that's going on, and what it's going to be.
I see it going on every day on the day.
Okay. That's what it's gonna be. You're very welcome. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Anna Kona, no one has showers, but, but I wanna address to the residents and these who build. Why you do not know? We have some meetings every month, the third Tuesday at four o'clock. We had Fells out, we had this one out, you do not come out. So, that's why you do not know. The meet next month is the third Tuesday at four o'clock. And I actually told me you was out. This is Anna Kona, the president.
I like that.
I work the health department, we have a meeting there, she's starting at one o'clock. State Representative Carol Ever, and I actually see some of these vets out, so we can help you. While you're not getting help again, you don't come and ask. Please come up, please, please, even land. I will give Lisa the address for some of you vets, and your family. We do help. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask why, uh, my house, police called, that I should get some money together.
She said, you called, you see money?
How we get there?
Police, what's the, I mean, they go to, they say, you, police?
They call, yeah, they, you...
I don't know, this is scam, this is scam.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they do that, it's you, too, and I asked the same question, and they told me, no.
Yeah, no, the, the police aren't gonna call you and ask you for money.
Yeah, that's why they, that's why they, they do it, they do it, they do it.
Okay. Unfortunately, there's organizations out there that call them, they solicit money, but you're not required to give money, don't give money to them. It's, it's marketers calling for a specific organization, whether it be the International Chiefs of Police, or something that, like that, trying to raise money, or it's someone, yes, trying to scam you out of your money. Yeah. The, the police department's not gonna call you and ask you for any money. We, we provide services. You already pay money when you pay taxes to us, yeah, so, all right? Sure.
Ms. Colette, and then Ms. Marilyn? Oh, I'm sorry? And then you, too, okay?
She says she was gonna get killed in her apartment, but they told me to not. Don't do that even, in your, in your comments. She lives in your comments, and some lady was gonna post kill her, and she stated that you would be more staff or security, because she hears that you're coming around. And that lady's still walking around.
We'll talk afterwards. I'll come see her, okay? Ms. Colette had a question, and Ms. Marilyn, that there?
Oh, it's another question.
Oh, come on.
I'm associated with Sandy, that's helping answer the homeless. And I just like to mention, if anybody needs any help with a veteran, any type of concern, please come to 412 West King Street, 10 to 5. If you have any, uh, any kind of questions or help with that, we can do that at 412 West King. Veteran Sandy, well, my husband, has to wait for Sandy's veterans helping hand with the homeless. So, please come out there to see us. My cell partner is Dorothy Miller at the center. So, please do that, if you know anybody else who's a veteran, and you have some kind of concern.
Marilyn?
Hi, I'm Marilyn Paye. One of my questions for last, well, about month, now, maybe ice and snow will take care of this, but we were coming home, friend and I from the roller rink on Saturday, quarter of eight, and the same bunch of little boys on their bikes stopped, literally stopped traffic at Pine and Princess, and I was the second car on the line, and this car in front of me, the guy was so shaken, he almost hit one of the boys. They were coming down Princess, blew their feelings, and just defying the cars there. And the man couldn't move, he was so shaken by it. These same kids that dropped my friend off on Queen Street, went around to George, and here they are coming down the middle of George Street. Now, I talked to the police that were walking around my house about it, and he said, take a picture, don't start, I can't. But these are kids, total, fifteen years old, and this was about six of them, and it's the same bunch, I recognize a couple of them, it's, got the same bunch. What can we do? I know you can't change them, because you'll be a cop, but they seem to have a regular... But they seem to have a regular route, so that's one of my questions.
I mean, the biggest thing that we do in these situations is kind of like the motorcycles that drive around. We work with the neighbors to try and identify where they live and who they are. And once we do that, we can go to the home and we can deal with the issue. Again, we come back to the situation that just this young lady brought up a little earlier. It goes into 911 and then it gets dispatched, and a lot of times, until our officers get out there, they're no longer there. So, I mean, if you can help us in kind of identifying a time, you say there's a pattern, that sort of thing, we can work with that. Or if you know who has a camera on their home around that area, that we might be able to get some video off of, we can do a good job, especially with kids, school age, of going to the school and figuring out who they are, and then we can deal with them a little bit that way. All right? Sure.
We have time for one more, because I know Lisa needs to get things together for lunch, and we'll be here. Again, I want to thank the Housing Authority, Lisa, everybody for hosting us and having us here. But we'll take one more question and then we'll be here to mingle with you. Yes, sir?
I can answer, I remember the question was asked, but are you planning to make Market Street two ways from Center City and from the Philly Lanes to Center City, still on?
Sounds like you want that, huh? Costs a little bit of money. We are exploring options. It has been a plan, as you know, for a long time, and the planning process underwent, and it looks like it would be a good thing for everyone. It is a cost factor now that we have to figure out and some other logistics, but it's not off the drawing board altogether, okay? Thank you all so very much again. We appreciate being here with you.